Okay, let's open up the Urbana City Council meeting.
Two out of three.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersak?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
President.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, March 2nd.
So moved.
I second.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, petitions and communications. Andre Arrington, you'd like to be first?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Andre Arrington, Director of the Don Murray Boys and Girls Club. I wanted to bring you guys a token of appreciation for, and give you an update also on the club. And the club members will be passing out the tokens of appreciation as I speak. Wanted to let you guys know that we're averaging about thirty-five to forty kids a day from the Urbana community at the Boys and Girls Club. Your dollars go to support the transportation program that brings these young people to and from the clubhouse, from Urbana schools and also home. This year, Alexis Wave, just wave. Alexis is the Youth of the Year, and she's an Urbana middle school youth, eighth grader. And so she's our spokesperson of all of our kids this year. So, you know, at this time, I can answer any questions anyone may have about the club and program.
Brandon?
Yeah, Andre, thanks for coming. I guess my only comment to you is just that I know the Crystalview Town Homes project on the former site of Lakeside Terrace is finally, finally going to be coming out of the ground here soon. So I hope you stay in touch with city staff. And I know we appreciate it being able to have a program there or bus kids to the club. And some of that same population will be back at the new development. So I hope that you might talk about how your services could be available to Urbana youth that way.
Okay, great.
And thanks for all your work.
Absolutely, thank you. And last but not least, this past weekend, we just had a bags tournament. Michael, come on. We just had a bags tournament, a tournament at Lincoln Square Mall. And that was a lot of fun, and we had a very good response working with the local business people in the mall, especially ADA Broadway, Doug Larson and his staff. And so, once again, just trying to make sure that we have a well-balanced approach to doing our business. Michael Byrd is our Director of Development. He can give you more insight on the bags tournament and how that went this past weekend.
Well, as you with council and mayor know, that a not-for-profit organization like ours, that so integral to the community, is faced with some real challenges, as many of us as individuals are. And the ways that we fund our organization certainly is through the support of council and the city, through grants, through corporate donations. But a major source of our funding, in excess of seventy percent of our funding, comes from individuals. And the individuals who support us, one of the ways that we reach out and meet them is by doing various events during the year. We do golf outings, we do a steak and burger dinner, we're planning a Derby Day function in May. We're working with USGA currently for a large grant to develop and establish a junior golf program. We replaced a large fundraiser of ours last year with a bags tournament. That's the activity where you throw the bags under the boards with holes on them, holes in them. I was speaking with someone earlier this evening, they said, "Oh, you mean bean bags." Well, technically, it's popcorn inside of the bag, so you can show that you have a knowledge of the sport now. But we, in communication with Susan Tolson, with your Urbana Business Association, with Wade Franklin at Lincoln Square Mall, had the opportunity to stage an event over the weekend so that we could be out in the community again and interacting and meeting more folks. And that event was very successful. We met quite a few business owners at Lincoln Square. And we just want to thank you for being such a gracious host and supporting the activities that we have. I would be remiss if I didn't extend the challenge from across the city line, from Champaign, some other council members and mayors would like to challenge you folks in some competition. So maybe we can stage something in an upcoming event that we can pit council against council and generate a little activity out of that.
Heather?
I was walking through Lincoln Square when the bags tournament was going on, and I thought, "Wow, this looks like a lot of fun, so I'm up for the challenge, and I'll take a Mayor Schwa heart on myself."
I can handle a bag, too.
I have to admit, maybe the mayor wouldn't want me to know, but he was a little preoccupied with the game Saturday. He was more interested in getting home and seeing the Illinois basketball game that he was there. But thank you so much for your hospitality of allowing us to conduct the event at Lincoln Square. And there's great things happening in that facility. Your downtown businesses were very warm and supportive of us and our planning of this. And there's certainly a feeling when you interface with the business communities that makes us feel that we're welcome to come into their stores and ask them for support. And I think it comes from your leadership, the things that we're seeing happening. So thank you for what you do for our club and for our kids.
Thank you.
Much. Larry Sapp?
Good evening. My name is Larry Sapp. I'm here representing Arrow Carl Ambulance at 210 East University Avenue in Champaign. I'm, I guess, briefly would like to speak on draft ordinance 2009-03-023, the ordinance amending the city of Urbana's schedule for fees to increase the annual fee for ambulance permits. I understand, and maybe I'm not quite clear on the procedural, what's going to occur tonight. And if someone could answer that, it might help me as far as my other comment. But tonight, if I understand correctly, there will be a vote on this ordinance? No, I see a no, okay. Will there be a vote on this?
No, there is not a vote tonight. This is for public comment. This is just opening up the public comment period, so you can comment tonight, and you'll probably have other chances as well.
Okay, great. And that was my follow-up. Would there be additional chances to provide some information about this ordinance and any impact that it might have to our business and to those people that we serve within the city of Urbana? So that was really my question and a very simple comment. So thank you very much.
Bob Sarkov?
Hello, this is Bob Sarkar. I'm from Provena Ambulance System. I came here basically to, I had the same questions Larry had, to find out whether we are, where we are moving with our, whether we are going to have a vote on ordinance number 2009-03-023. If not, what I heard, we are, are we going to have an opportunity for further discussion? We would appreciate that. And so that hopefully we'll have some more further studies done, study sessions done.
Well, do you want to comment on it right now?
I can, very briefly. You know, as an ambulance operator, I don't, you know, I'm going to talk about a little bit of the operation. Out of hundred dollars, we collect as a collection, thirty cents out of a hundred dollars. That is, probably that's the same thing with Larry, too, because we do not go for collection or collection agency. So as a result, you might think from outside that it's a huge profit-making business, or our department, it is not. It's a loss department. I just wanted to make sure that everybody in this room, council members are sensitive of that. It's a huge opportunity, or a huge community that our citizens here have. If we really have to increase our fee by this probably tenfold or hundredfold, we probably have to pass that cost to our patients or our community, which probably will, we do not want to do that. So just wanted to share that with you. And hopefully, we will get some more opportunity to discuss a study session and share with you what we have, what we do, and know each other's operation better or perspective better.
Do you have information on what other cities charge ambulance services?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Not at this point, but ambulance operation, especially in a town of Urbana, or Champaign, operates in the same margin that we do. Because we are non-for-profit, there are for-profit operators, too, for example, Janville Medics. They have a collection rate of much higher than us, probably double than us. So it's a huge difference there in philosophy and in operation.
Dennis?
I guess I'm a little bit curious and would like to have more information on maybe two things. Who do you bill? Do you bill individuals who are, who take the services through the fact that they need to be picked up at the residence or whatever, accident sites? And are you telling us that the amount that you receive is due to many instances where our people are unable to pay? In other words, you're not able to collect the fees that you've actually requested them?
The second instance is more applicable. We pick up folks who are citizens who are in Medicaid or are unable to pay. So we have a huge charity care and bad debt backlog. That has, also probably applies to our partner hospitals, Carl, too. So that is one of the huge contributing factors of this low collection, if I can say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary Seiko?
Good evening. My name is Gary Seiko at 506 West Vermont. I wanted to make some comments about the proposed lighting ordinance. Is that coming up tonight for some action? Okay, so if I can get this to go in here. Let me start off just by saying that I'm pleased to see that Urbana is moving toward coming up with the ordinance for lights. And this applies to private and commercial, as I understand it. Just to, bit of a summary, well, there's three main things here involved. One has to do with the intensity of the light, the other the direction, and the third main thing would be the efficiency. Considering the intensity that is in the proposed ordinance, there are certain guidelines that exist already. There's the International, sorry, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, and they have standards for what they call lighting zone three and four, which is like medium and high. And for some reason, the proposed intensities in the ordinance are twenty-five percent brighter than the recommended maximum by IES. And there is also a modern lighting ordinance being put together by IES and the International Doc Sky Society, and they also have the same recommended. So it's twenty-five percent above that. For the commercial, so, just to back up a little bit, you're proposing one-foot candle for residential, and the maximum for IES is point eight. For the commercial, the ordinance proposes two-point-five-foot candles. This is sixty-six percent brighter than the current maximum recommended. And it's twice as bright as what's in the current model lighting ordinance draft. This is being put together by the International Doc Sky Association and IES, as I mentioned. So there's a tendency to realize, we don't really need as much light as we thought, and there are energy considerations. So the intensity is quite a bit higher than what is considered in the area. So I wanted to make that one comment. Now, how do I get to the little PDF here? It'll be this guy, right? And if I go with the current. The other thing had to do with the direction. The ordinance calls for full cutoff lighting, and yet, the classification of full cutoff lighting is no longer used by the Engineering, Illuminating Engineering Society. So what I have up here is the new classification system that's used, and so they divide it up into ten different areas. And there is high-up light and low-up light, there's also forward light, there's also forward-low, forward-medium. And so the current standards give you much more information than just something like full cutoff. So I don't know how you're going to be able to use this if you're requiring full cutoff when luminaires are no longer giving that type of information, they're giving more information. What you see here in front of you is actually the three new LED lights that have been put on a trial basis on Lincoln Avenue at Michigan. Many of you perhaps have seen those, right? And you can see that if we look at the uplight here, so the uplight is combined, the high-up light is a hundred degrees to a hundred degrees, eighty degrees, and the uplight, the low, is from ninety to a hundred. So if you combine those two here, we have point-two percent. This is not strictly full cutoff, so you couldn't use this light under your ordinance. So that's a bit of a problem, I see, with the ordinance. The other thing is that this information gives you some nice data about glare. The forward-high, if you look here, if I got that right, oh, the forward very high, between eighty and ninety is the part that gives you glare, and the lights we have there on Lincoln that they're trying out now, if I got this right, is point-four percent. And it's that ninety to eighty that gives you the glare. And if you've gone down, like, and you've seen that, it's very nice, those three lights, because there's much less glare compared to the other light. So this information, the current system, some people call this a bug system because it provides information on backlight, where you don't want the light to go behind the fixture, say, into a residence, uplight and glare. This is what they're using now. I don't know how the city is going to be able to use this ordinance when, if you ask a manufacturer, "What are the photometrics of your light?", if they give you this, the full cutoff really doesn't apply anymore. Or if you did use the old full cutoff, you'd have to perhaps throw lights out that are pretty good. So those are the two main comments that I have about the proposed ordinance. So to summarize, I'm concerned that light levels are too high, the term full cutoff is no longer used, and I'm not sure how the city's going to be able to use that to evaluate new lights. And the third thing is, there's really no mention made of energy efficiency. Well, mention is made, but only insofar as they're not going to let any light up into the sky. But there's nothing related to lead or some of the other standards that have been proposed for energy efficiency in terms of how much light is produced per watt, energy consumption. So those are the three concerns I have about the proposed ordinance.
Any questions for Gary? We're very concerned that after we learned full cutoff lighting, the lingo has changed.
Yeah?
Yes. We don't know how our ordinances can ever keep up. Robert?
What do you think the reason for this sudden shift in thinking?
Well, it's not a real change in thinking, it's just providing more information about lights.
Oh, I understand that.
So if you want, if you want to say that no lights that go above ninety degrees will be permitted, you can do that, and you'll have that information here. But there are some pretty good lights, such as the ones we have on Lincoln, that have very little uplight, point, what is the total of here, point-two percent, right? And have some other very nice characteristics, sort of energy efficiency. So it's allowing people who are designing lighting systems and ordinances to be able to get more information from the luminaires and decide what they want to go. I forgot to mention that, well, I did mention there's a model lighting ordinance being put together by IDA, International Doc Sky Association, and the Illuminating Engineering Society. And that's in draft form now, and that should be coming out soon. That may actually be something that the city would want to look at instead. The whole purpose of that is to allow cities to adopt and tailor-make quickly ordinances about lighting without having to put in a lot of money into engineering and their own preparation for that.
Thank you.
Although I'm no expert to talk about how well that modeled ordinance is, I just know what's out there.
Charlie? Heather was first, okay, sorry.
I just had a question. I'm not seeing in the ordinance anything about fiscal impact to the city when it comes to replacement lights and the such, and I wondered if we have anything like that when it comes to numbers or anything like that yet.
Did anyone calculate the cost differences? Okay, we'll wait till the staff report then. Charlie?
Yeah, I would, I would ask if we could, if some questions come up, and I think a year ago, as I mentioned, that there, that the whole issue of full cutoff, cutoff was under debate and had changed, and I think I sent, right, I sent out a note, I talked about bug at the time, that backlight, uplight, glare issue. And it turns out that, you know, the terminology has changed, and it took its time to actually make its way into the public domain. But it happened about a year ago, right after we started talking about and passed a couple of council policies, basically, the terminology changed. And we weren't informed of that properly by the lighting consultant that spoke to us, who should have known that the terminology had changed, because it had already changed when he spoke to us. So that came, came out some time ago. It's in, there's a revised version of the, of the lighting white paper that Gary and I and a bunch of others have put together. And what we should try to do is incorporate some of this newest material that Gary's got here tonight, the references to the, to the MLO, and get it back out to you. So I would hope that after we get the staff report, we send this to committee for further discussion, and we tap Gary and others in the community on lead and other things that need to be incorporated into this.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike Lehman?
Safety first. Good evening. Yeah, that's right. Good evening. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution on low-power FM radio that council member Gary gets proposed. This is something that's important to our community. WRFU 104.5 FM is the only broadcast station located in our community other than the WILL stations. We're a community station, we're located in the downtown post office, they're around the north side of Lincoln Square. We've been on the air for about three and a half years. We are on the air 24/7. We provide lots of time for community members to put their own shows on, our music when there's not anybody around or not other programming going on, consists of local music. So we really do support the community, the community supports us, and we would appreciate having this passed tonight. It sort of started off a little bit theoretical, and sometimes people, you know, argue about the pertinence of ordinances like this, but if you'll bear with me, I'll point out why it's even more important now here because of events in the last couple of weeks. We were lucky in that we are a small community and that channels are available here. In fact, when they passed this back in December 2000, it turns out that the fifty largest American cities, only one of them got any of the low-power FM channels for a number of technical reasons I'm not going to go into here. Part of this was opposition from the National Association of Broadcasters, which is an association of commercial broadcasters. They have thousands of stations with thousands of watts of power. We broadcast with the power of a single light bulb, a hundred watts. So in part, this is designed to support others like us in other communities. However, it's also more important than ever because last week, the National Association of Broadcasters decided to pursue a suit that they have against the FCC, which would impose on low-power FM stations like WRFU, something, refers to something called encroachment. What this means is, there's a number of different classes of licenses out there, but if commercial full-power broadcasters can encroach on us, that means they can basically kick us off our channel because they've decided to move somewhere or change your channel or something like that. The FCC, in the last couple of years, has actually imposed some protections for low-power FM stations. And what the suit is about by the NAB is to say that, no, the FCC cannot grant some minimal protections, which mainly amount to working with stations to try to make sure that we get another channel if somehow we were forced off the air. This has occurred to a few of the low-power stations. With the current ruling by the FCC, they got financial assistance and technical assistance to find that alternative station. So that was very important. If that's taken away, what it means is that RFU could go off the air quite easily if somebody just decided, hey, they want their station somewhere else. Hopefully, that won't happen, but that makes this even more pertinent than it otherwise would be. As I mentioned, we play local music, we help the increasing numbers of Hispanic, Spanish people, speaking Peabody community with two hours of Radio Bilingue, which is an NPR program that serves the news and information needs of the Spanish community across the country. We provide some international news, which supports the large number of international students in our community at the university. We also support things from churches who want to have their broadcast on the air, they do that. We also have people that do music shows, there's some political stuff on there, but it's a range of politics. We've had libertarians, we've had Muslim women, we've had people that just don't care and they like to play music. So it's not really controversial, and we do provide this service to anybody who steps up to the plate and meets some very minimal standards. It also helps local business because people could, for instance, choose to underwrite with us, but we actually have people who share their abilities with the community by having shows about finance and other issues. It has drawn support from both sides of the national political aisle. John McCain has supported it, and of course, Senator Obama also supported it, who hopefully will continue to support it as president. The location of the downtown post office is very pertinent because, as Bob Machesney, who's a professor of media at the university, has noted, the original intent of the post office was to provide subsidized service to distribute information that's needed in a democracy. We'd like to think that we fit in with that intent, and we'd like your support. I unfortunately have a lesson plan I have to finish for tomorrow, and I don't want to neglect my students, so I won't be around for that, but I hope you do support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you run off.
Sure.
Sharon? Do you have any estimate of your listenership?
That's really hard to say. Interestingly enough, you can actually pick up the signal almost to the county line to the east, but the buildings on campus block us off. We're not actually at the full legal height that we can be, we're about sixty-five feet. We can go up to no higher than a hundred feet. We hope to, in the near future, build a permanent tower that would take us up, get us over those buildings on campus and serve a lot more of the folks to the west. But for Urbana itself, we serve Urbana pretty efficiently. So it's available out there, we don't have the funds, unfortunately, to invest in those Arbitron-type things, but we have noted in other communities that they have shown up in Arbitron ratings, I'm just not aware that we have here yet.
I do enjoy listening, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. E. Wayne Johnson?
Yes, I also wanted to come, I'm E. Wayne Johnson, I live at 1810 South Vine Street. I also wanted to speak in favor of this resolution, but I had a question, because I did a little bit of looking in the internet, and there is a bill before Congress, I believe, that involves low-power FM radio stations, and I think it may, may be of some interest. And I wondered if it, if that should be addressed in this, in this resolution. Unfortunately, I didn't bring any information about it with me, but I did notice that, I believe that Representative Tim Johnson is one of the co-sponsors of this, of this bill, and I'm wondering if, if it, if that should be addressed either up or down in this, in this resolution, because I believe it's something that is indeed current.
Okay, it talks about Congress, and we can certainly send a copy to our representatives.
But I can see, I believe that there is a bill, and I, you know, I did look it up on the internet, I don't have the number of it with me right now, but I believe it has been introduced in the past two weeks or so, a bill before Congress, that would actually defend the position of these low-power FM stations. I believe that Representative Johnson is one of the co-sponsors, so it might be useful to look it up. Yes, sir.
Okay, did you have a question or comment?
I just wanted to say, I don't know about a particular bill, but if it is what you described, then I think I would certainly support it, and I think a lot of people would.
Yeah, I think it might be useful to, maybe to, to look at. Yeah, I, I think it might be useful to, maybe to, to look that up and see if it's something that could be plugged in as part of this resolution.
Well, we could always send the resolution along with the letter on the bill.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council? Okay, we'll move on. I, I don't think we have any old business. Reports of standing committees? David Garrick?
Hello? Greetings from the Committee of the Whole, as always, they hope you're doing well. The Committee of the Whole has brought a single agenda item to the, to the council, and that's ordinance number 2009-03-017, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the Schedule of Fees, adding Design Review Board application fee, adding fireworks permit fee, and revising food handler licensing fees. And on behalf that, of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval.
Second?
Was that Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by David Garrick, seconded by Charlie Smythe. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Brandon wanted to say-
Just a brief comment, so people know what we're voting on for clarity, I guess, is this Schedule of Fees revision only includes those three fees that David listed, and not, not the ambulance fees or any of the other fee changes that are in the full Schedule of Fee update for the fiscal year this summer. This is the fees that change in April, just those listed.
This came through the committee, and we have not seen the ambulance one in the committee. Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersap?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? That motion carries.
And that concludes the report of the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you. That was excellent report. Okay.
Although we would like to express our regret on the fact that Brandon has regained his voice.
Yeah, sir.
Okay, reports of special committees, I don't believe we have any. Reports of officers? Anyone want to report? I do want to read a proclamation, that's my report. Whereas the National Exchange Club is an all-volunteer, national service organization for men and women who want to serve their community, develop leadership skills, and enjoy new friendships, and whereas the National Exchange Club was founded on March 27, 1911, and the Exchange Club of Urbana was founded on October 4, 1926, and whereas for over 80 years, the club has provided exemplary programs of service to Urbana and to the surrounding area, and whereas on March 18, 2009, the Urbana Exchange Club will welcome Frank Albarico of Lockport, Illinois, who is the past president of the Lincoln Land Exchange District, in honor of the 98th birthday of the National Exchange Club, and whereas the City of Urbana desires to honor the history and accomplishments of the Exchange Club and its importance to our community. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lund Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim March 18, 2009, as Urbana Exchange Club Day, in the City of Urbana, and to express the thanks to the citizens of the city for the fine work done by the Urbana Exchange Club, its members, and its officers, in recognition of the National Exchange Club's 98th birthday. Okay. Any other reports of officers? Oh, Charlie?
No, I was going to ask if we could have Mike Smeltzer's report on the Big Band Project before we jump into new business. I think he's just providing-
Well, I think it's a pretty long report, and that's why we put it at the end.
Oh, okay, it is? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought maybe Mike was coming late or something, but since he was here, okay, that's-
Okay, the next item is the Resolution on the Capital Improvement Revenue Bonds, Resolution Number 2009-03-013. You've heard from Kurt Froelich. Would you like to say something on behalf of Cunningham Children's Home to explain what the-
Can I give you five minutes?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. Just explain what you're going to do with the money.
Sure.
I'm sure you're going to use it wisely.
Yes, absolutely. For, for the past 115 years, Cunningham Children's Home has enjoyed a positive relationship with the city of Urbana, and I'd like to thank the mayor, the staff, and the council members for their continued support and leadership in matters concerning children. We described the project a little bit, but I can tell you that this is a refinancing of a current debt, a project that was completed in 2005, a residential treatment center. It cost, obviously, more than almost $4.5 million to build, and it, it is a very state-of-the-art, premier residential treatment center. And so Urbana, this is one of few treatment centers of this kind in the state of Illinois, and we deal with a variety of behaviors and emotional problems there, at the residential treatment center. By your approval and supporting of this bond offering, it allows us to save closely to half a million dollars over the next 20 years. Hopefully, if the capital campaign with Lou Henson and Coach, and Kendall Gill, if it goes well, we won't need to keep that open that long. And what it will do is allow us to save money on our debt service there by hiring more direct care staff, and accelerating the plans for a, a new school that we plan on building in the near future, as well as a special therapies and recreation complex. That project will be approximately $9 to $15 million, and so your support and approval of this will allow us to do that in a more timely fashion. And so, I just appreciate your leadership, Mayor, Mayor, and the sta, and the council members as well, and I'll open myself up to any questions as well. I'll be, I'll say after in the back if anybody from the community has any questions directly for me as well.
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question about the, the sort of bond sale, which is, are these, is the financing being provided by Bucy Bank, you know, out of their holdings and sources? Or are these really bonds that get sold to other individuals who might purchase them on the municipal bond market and elsewhere?
I'll defer to Kurt, in case I get into too much trouble, but these are bank-qualified bonds, and that means the bank is going to, has agreed in advance to purchase the bonds, and they will be held by the bank, and so-
Okay.
Did I get that correct?
You got it absolutely right on the head.
Thank you.
Anyway, that bank qualification is very important, and in the new, in the new tax bill by Congress that just, the President just signed, it has increased the ability to do bank-qualified bonds, so they recognize this as something very important.
Okay.
Now, that's not the reason it's locked in, to use, anyone can buy bank-qualified bonds, it makes them actually more marketable. The reason that you want this at Bucy Bank is, we don't get into any problems with securities laws and all the things. This thing behaves just like an ordinary bank loan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, is there a motion?
I so move.
Okay, motion by Barnes, and seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion?
Quick question for Ron.
Mr.?
Ron, have you, I assume you, you have no comment on this?
No, because Kurt's been the bond counsel, he's, he's been handling this entire thing. My understanding is that this has no effect on the city of Urbana in terms of our ability to do public financing, that it will be something that really has no effect on us financially at all.
It does not limit our other, our bond cap, does not use it up, it's a special additional thing.
We're just the sponsor, then, as, as it puts it in here.
We're sort of the facility.
Pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I have a question.
Yes.
My question isn't so much about this particular bond conveyance, but, but about the use of these bonds in general. The Cunningham, the Cunningham School is going to be using this one, and you indicated that the retirement home on South Windsor used the other one, Clark Lindsay. It was used historically by the city, the city adopted a bond issuance for assisting the construction of Clark Lindsay, apparently, that's before I was here. So, I'm, I'm kind of curious a little bit about the use of these bonds, and whether, as nonprofit agencies, this is a common funding source for large projects and construction for nonprofits?
It is very much used for nonprofits. Hospitals will do hundreds of millions of dollars of issues. For example, all over the Chicago suburbs, I can't think of a major hospital 501(c)(3) system that has not availed itself of these kinds of bonds. Now, because many systems are all over the state, they will go through the Illinois Finance Authority, so there is one place they can go. Those bonds are not bank-qualified, and that's why the city is preferred for this one, but this is a very common financing device.
Okay, we have a motion by Barnes, seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
Mayor, before we go on to the next ordinance, I'll need to recuse myself, because I have administrative responsibility with Aero Ambulance at my day job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is ordinance number 2009-03-023, an ordinance amending the City of Urbana's Schedule of Fees to increase the annual fee for ambulance service. Did you want to say anything, Ron?
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Need to clarify something, I, after speaking with Ron Eldridge prior to this meeting, Ron has requested that I withdraw the ordinance from consideration, because it's being handled in the fee schedule, and he did not feel that it necessitated a separate ordinance. So, we're still, you're still considering the fee increase, but it's just going to be on the Schedule of Fees, rather than consideration of a separate ordinance.
Well, this could just be the discussion of the increase in the fees, then.
Right, that's-
And then, when we finally get around to doing whatever we're going to do, that would be several meetings from now?
Yes, it's in 30 days, yes.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to clarify, so you know that you're not considering that separate ordinance.
We understand that we're not going to vote on it tonight, this is only for information, correct?
No, you're not going to consider the ambulance ordinance at all.
Right, but I'm talking about the, the fee increase, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Ron?
Yeah, that, that was just my thing, there was some miscommunication, and really, number, number two really is not necessary at all, it's covered in the subsequent law and so.
Well, do you want to have any discussion about the pros and cons? I shouldn't say pros, that's an ambulance company.
Well, yeah, we, if you, if you want to move on to the, to the next item, then-
Okay.
It would be the whole Schedule of Fees.
Chief Dilly, did you want to come in?
I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of this, so you guys would have everything that I have and the information. And just as a reminder, the two ambulance services in town, one run by Covenant, Provena Hospital, the other by Aero Ambulance, currently runs out of our main fire station, two locations in the City of Urbana, and they alternate 30 days at a time, taking turns in the stations, just remind you that they did that. What we were looking at here was that this agreement that we entered into with the ambulance services, probably at least 10 years ago now, has had the same licensing fee for all that time, and has never been raised, to my knowledge, anyway. If it has, it wouldn't have been much at all. So, we get to looking at what we thought was a very grossly inappropriate amount that the ambulance services were paying for licensing fees in the City of Urbana. So, I will acknowledge to you, this is a huge increase, but I would also offer that it has not been increased in, in well over 10 years, so we're kind of trying to play catch-up for one thing. And we did meet with both ambulance services and presented this idea to them, probably a month or so ago. Mr. Larry Sapp, who is the director for Aero, was there, and then, I don't see the representative from Provena, but they did have a representative there. We presented our plans, the amounts and everything, and I did not receive objection to it, they had some questions, and we answered their questions. What I would like the council to know is that currently, based on the number of runs that the two ambulance services provide in the City of Urbana, the cost per run is .04 cents per run. We're asking that more of a 2009 appropriate expense be $9.64 per run, that's what it breaks down to if you consider the number of runs that they conduct in the City of Urbana, which we felt like it would be a more appropriate and fair amount to be charging, and that's how we established the fee for what we decided would be the, the fee that we'd like to charge. And I just will add that our cost for our EMS delivery service has grossly increased over the last five years, our training costs, it currently costs us $10,000 for one EMTI for the amount of training, for one initial training, each individual costs us around $10,000. And there are some consumables that we buy out of our budget, but by and large, our EMS delivery service costs have gone up grossly, and so we're just trying to offset some of those costs, training being one of them, and that's why we've arrived at this point now.
Heather?
Mike, do you think that some more discussion could benefit both parties involved? Seems like going from $125 to $15,000 is, I think anybody, I don't care who you are, if you have a brain, looks at that and says, what's going on? And then, I know that the City of Champaign's looking at, you know, even more than that. So, I think that discussion is vital to, to this huge increase, and, you know, there's other people paying fees, certainly licensing fees, but they're not, the, the amounts aren't what we're seeing here. And so I think that, to be fair and reasonable to both parties, that I think a lot more discussion needs to happen.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and I, I, they have every right to have any kind of questions answered, and a discussion and a dialogue to, before a decision's made, ultimately, it'll be your, you guys' decision to make that. I will just say also that the Fire Chief in Champaign and myself agree that it would be prudent that we do it together or not do it at all, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Brandon?
Yeah. Mike, thanks for some of that background, that's helpful. I think one suggestion is, if you all can provide some information about comparables, what other cities are sized, whether it's Bloomington, Indiana, or Bloomington Normal, are charging, so that we can see where amongst all of our peers we line up, that would be helpful. Another question is, the fees that you mentioned, the costs, the training costs that are $10,000 per person, are those trainings that we deliver to our firefighters employed by us, or are those costs that really do provide a benefit to the two ambulance companies who, who cohabitate with us in the stations?
Well, initially, the service that's delivered, which is the EMTI level, is beneficial to our citizens, because what it can do is get us, because we're geographically okay with our fire stations, can get us to the locations, maybe a little quicker sometimes in the ambulance services, and then we can provide the essential pre-hospital care that would be beneficial to the citizen, that could help them down the road to recover quicker or recover immediately, like defibrillation if you're in a heart attack, and we can also deliver certain medications, narcotics, and stuff that, that our people are able to do as a result of that upgraded service, Brandon. And the other thing I might add is that, in the middle of the game, the state changed the rules on us and made us go to a much higher level of training, which we had to step up our game to be able to meet that, and that's part of those initial, or additional costs I mentioned.
And I guess the thing that I'd ask as we look at this is that we make sure the fee is based on the cost to the city to provide the services. Obviously, it's a huge benefit that our firefighters have medical rescue skills, and that we get an ambulance in our main fire station as well. But, I, a lot of our fees in the Schedule of Fees are really based on, what does it cost us to administer the program, to certify, to, to deal with paperwork, to go out and inspect, and all those things. So, I imagine the costs for us are the space, the electricity, the water, the, you know, all of our resources that we're kind of giving away part of our building here to the two ambulance companies, and somehow, to me, it seems like the cost of the fee should correlate with, like it does with our other fees, with the cost of us providing the services and kind of letting them have a lease here on our facility. and kind of letting them have a lease here on our facilities and operating out of, out of here. So I don't know if there's, if you've put together some of that information already, or if you could talk about that a little more. I know we have a whole month at least until we approve this schedule of fees. But that would be helpful to me and sort of seeing what it costs us to have the ambulances housed here.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. And I might just add that I'll see if I can look at some comparables for other cities. I will say that most cities are going to running their own ambulance services as opposed to, and I think we have a good setup here. I'm not criticizing our setup. I think both ambulance services do a wonderful job for us. But because of geographic capital buildings they already have, they're going to doing that by the fire department and creating and generating revenues themselves through that service too, so.
Thanks.
Dennis?
And since the ordinance specifies that the fees that are being raised or looked at today have to do with services to non-resident parties, do you want to address who or what non-resident is and how they would initiate a fee? Are you talking about people who are not within the city limits?
That's actually a separate part from this.
Okay, it's a separate part.
Yeah, that's totally different.
All right.
And I, I just want to let you know too that we're also going to be asking to move that subject. That's why you don't have a copy of that ordinance.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Initially, the thought was that we were going to also do that in the fee schedule. Having conversation with Ms. Seabird and Chief Dilly, we've actually found a section in the fire department ordinance, in the code of ordinances, that is, in my opinion, a better place to put that second ordinance. So it won't be on the fee schedule, it'll actually be part of another standalone ordinance.
So do you want to withdraw the two ordinances then?
That's correct.
The schedule of fees?
Actually, not, not even withdraw this, the one regarding charging for fire department time and equipment. I want that one moved to the next committee meeting. I think that's what Chief, if I understand, that's what we, okay.
Are you talking about item three on the agenda?
I think so because I brought it up.
Okay, so item two is just withdrawn and item three you want to move to committee meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so maybe we could have a motion to do both of those things.
I'll move to withdraw number two and move number three, ordinance number 2009-03-022.
The next committee meeting?
Aye, second aye.
I think we're canceling the one on the 23rd, so if you just say the next committee meeting, that out of cover, that out of cover, whatever we intend to do. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Is that okay now?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to number four, ordinance number 2009-03-022. An ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the schedule of fees. And this is only for discussion, correct?
I'm going to turn it over to Dolores Seabird.
Okay.
Dolores is from the Finance Department and really handles our day-to-day operations and administration of our permits and fees and licenses.
As you know, we review and annually review and adjust license and permits to keep pace with the cost of providing the related services. Our larger fees like liquor licenses and sewer benefit tax are adjusted annually. And smaller fees for the smaller permits and licenses are adjusted every three to four years. Since most of the service we provide and personnel, is in personnel time, the cost of providing the related services is mainly driven by the increases in salaries. This cost may be less than or more than the consumer price index. The estimated cost increase for fiscal year '08-'09 is 4.5%. This year, in addition to the annual increase in liquor licenses and sewer taxes, there are proposals to adjust some of the smaller permits and licenses in the miscellaneous categories. We've already discussed, there's a proposal to increase the ambulance license fee, that was one. And the non-resident fire rescue fees now are going to be moved outside of the, of the fee schedule, which, if you looked at your copy, you saw that was in there, okay. Another thing we're removing from the schedule is the increase in the parking meter rate in the downtown, if you noticed that. That's going to be moved to whenever we present the downtown parking study. So that's out of that schedule right now too. The city code requires that the proposed schedule of fees be reviewed by the city council and placed on file with the city clerk's office at least thirty days prior to final action by the city council. During that time, the schedule of fees is available for public inspection and any comments they want to make. A notice of that schedule is, a notice that the schedule is available for public inspection is, is published in the News Gazette. And we will also be posting this on our website, the entire schedule. At this time, the only action required is for the, the schedule to be put on comment. And so the ordinance amending the schedule of fees will be placed on the May 4, 2009 council meeting agenda for movement at that time.
Any questions for Dolores?
I was just going to add one thing. You know, there's, the city's really kind of basically got four major sources of revenues. There's, there's sales income taxes, but those are sort of out of our control. And we establish percent, but it's really based on other factors. So the only two that really are under local control are property tax and these fees and fines that we charge for the licenses. And current, modern government financial theory suggests that, that we ought to look at fees and permits and licenses. And it's more appropriate that the users of those services pay for those costs than loading it on the property taxpayers. And that's kind of been the, the modern way of thinking. So in that regard, you know, each and every year, we ask all the department heads to look at the services that they provide, such as like the ambulance license, and make sure that we're covering our costs, make sure that the charge is appropriate and comparable with other cities. And so that, that's where this came from. So I compliment Chief Dilly for bringing it forward, especially I think, you know, given the economic times that we're going, that we're in now and, and we may be facing in the near future, you know, it's important that those fees and charges do reflect the cost of the services. And, and it's no small amount. They're going to be close to $2 million this year for the City of Urbana and all those charges. So I just wanted to add that comment.
Charlie?
Got a couple of issues here. So you're estimating that the cost, that, I don't know whether it's CPI or inflation or whatever, for the next year is going to be four and a half percent in, in the memo here. How do you guys come to that conclusion?
It's really probably more than that. I mean, our, our personnel costs have gone up way more than that. I mean, that, that was approximately our cost of just the increase in our salaries, but that did not include 12% increase in health insurance, 15% increase in pension costs, the increase in the materials, public works uses, and the asphalt, concrete, salt, all are in double digits. So, you know, really, the cost of providing those services is probably way, way above the 4.5%. I could not tell you exactly, I could estimate it. They do produce, you know, the LM Municipal, you may have seen in their magazines, they produce what they call municipal price index. That's supposedly sort of, and it's always significantly above the consumer price index.
I think, I think this time around, I think it's really important that we, that we nail down that number and where it comes from for the public so that they understand that a lot of costs to government go up a lot faster than the inflation that they see because of the types of materials, the things that cities are doing. And so, you know, there are two referenda out there that are probably, you know, come right back to this, this issue of how fast some of these, these costs go up beyond inflation. And I think it's really important that we explain that and get that information out to the public. So I appreciate whatever information you can give back. So can, you know, I, you know, I've heard this rumor that we're not going to have a committee meeting next week, is that correct? Is that, there's nothing on the agenda or?
Right, but this, this will be discussed in April because it's due to be passed in, in May.
Right, but, okay, so, so my request that would be that we see this in about three weeks then, at our next committee meeting, whenever that occurs, you know, get this material. Okay, along the same lines, you know, I'm glad that, that parking is going to be considered sort of separately because I think, you know, given, given what's going on with downtown, I'm very concerned about raising parking rates, especially after what happened in Champaign. Maybe we better, you know, I'm sort of, if we do anything, it's enforcing the two-hour limit that I'm more concerned with than raising rates. So I'll just say that right now and we can keep discussing that. Will we see that in three weeks as well? Is that, when is that coming to committee?
I'm not sure when that's coming, Mike.
Pat Paletti is bringing that, I'm not for sure. Bill, do you know when it's coming? No, I'm not for sure.
And then, and then my last issue is the sewer tax rate from 260 to 299. Again, a big increase. Again, you know, it's a 15% increase. Why is it, why does it need to be so big? Obviously, it's related to funding. I'd like to revisit the East Urbana Sewer Interceptor Project. I remember there are different pieces of it. And so maybe Bill can remind me between now and whenever we discuss this again, what those pieces were. But I'm concerned that we start building sewers to nowhere. I know that there are some lift stations and stuff that need to be done regardless, but I don't want to do any unnecessary sewer work that is, goes far, far beyond existing city limits or even the city limits that we haven't even filled out to, given that the Monarch Project's on hold. So those are the three issues that, that come to my, to, to my mind on, on all of this.
I would like to point out that I had recommended a reduction in the Class R, which is the restaurant liquor license, because we were considerably higher than Champaign. And so what we're doing is lowering that over two years. We lowered it $500 this fiscal year, and this is a proposal to lower it another $500. So when you talk about the cost, Ron, are you saying the, you're keeping them in the same year? Like you're projecting forward what the employment cost will be? Or are you sort of lagging a year, keeping the fees the way they, the cost were the previous year? Which way is it?
No, I would be projecting forward. In other words, these fees and licenses are effective July 1 of '09 to June 30, and so I'm looking at what I think our cost will be at that time.
Okay.
One other comment I want to add to is Champaign, you know, we, we do compare ourselves to Champaign, and we're not exactly the same in many areas. And sometimes Champaign has not increased some of their license and fee charges for years and years and years. So we didn't think that we could afford to do that, but I, I know that now, given their financial situation, they are undertaking a big study of their fees and licenses. And I know that the staff is going to be recommending some significant increases across the board on a lot of their fees and licenses, really catching up. To me, it seems like a much better way to do it is keep up with inflation year to year than once every 10 years have a gigantic jump. So, but we will be looking at, at what they pass and trying to, to bring that information back to you as well.
And they are looking to how well this has worked in Urbana, so I thank you for doing this. Changing it every year instead of big lump changes. Any other, oh, Dennis?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Charlie said about the caution for the downtown parking. It'd be better to implement collection rather than to raise the fees for our parking meters downtown, I think, but we'll have a discussion on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Brandon has a question.
I don't know if we actually did a motion to place this on file for comment and review and then to send it to the next committee, but I'd like to, I'd like to move that.
Okay, motion by Brandon, seconded by Charlie, is that correct? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Okay, we are now up to item five, the zoning, the outdoor lighting standards. And I think we have Jeff Engstrom and Robert Myers, both? Or is this the Jeff, Jeff Engstrom Show? Okay.
It's the Jeff and Robert Show.
Oh, the Jeff and Robert Show, okay.
All right. This is our proposed lighting ordinance. It's a response to city council goals and a comprehensive plan implementation strategy. So I'll try to give you a little bit of background here. The city has long enforced against things like nuisances and glare, but we are currently limited in the provisions in the, in the zoning ordinance. Right now, there's only a couple little things. One item addresses lighting from a parking lot must be blocked so it doesn't shine into a nearby residence. And I think there's some similar language regarding outdoor advertising sign structures, but nothing very comprehensive. So that's why we came up with this ordinance. Lots of other cities have adopted lighting ordinances over the years. Champaign has a few lighting controls in their ordinance, things like light levels in parking lots and heights for lighting poles. Other cities have more detailed things, like the Town of Normal, Illinois, and the Village of Homer Glen. They have an award-winning lighting ordinance from Pat Quinn, back when he was lieutenant governor. So we tried to model our ordinance off of some of the more comprehensive ones like Homer Glen and the Town of Normal. Let me get you a little bit of background here on why we need a lighting ordinance. Few different reasons or goals of having a lighting ordinance, reducing light pollution. I'll get into these a little more detailed in a minute here. Reducing light trespass, improving security and safety, reducing energy consumption, and establishing an appropriate lighting context. So for light pollution, we've all seen these kinds of pictures, the, the night sky is disappearing. Light that's aimed upwards is bouncing off of moisture and particulates in the atmosphere and making it hard to see the night sky, causing this phenomenon called a sky glow. Light trespass, this is the classic example of when someone's light is shining in your bedroom window and keeping you up and generally not a good thing. So this is something we hope to rein in with our lighting ordinance we've got proposed. Lighting and security. These are four pictures of a person in a hoodie standing underneath a, a light pole. And the first, and, and the first two, you really can't see them. And that's because of glare. So the pictures in the right half are cutoff fixtures. I'm not sure if they're full cutoff or not, but when you have a cutoff fixture, you're able to see better. The light, the eye, the human eye adjusts to the brightest object in its field of view. So any glaring light is going to make it hard to see people wearing dark clothing, standing underneath lights. So that's kind of some of the rationale for what we get into later with regards to requiring full cutoff lighting. Another issue with security is lighting uniformity. If you only have one source of light and it's a bright source, first of all, it glares. But the other thing is it, it's really intense under that light, but farther away, it gets really dark really quick. So, and you're able to, and it creates shadows in which people can hide, think like that. So lighting uniformity is something that's important. Having multiple light sources that produce even light produce more secure environments. Energy consumption is another issue. If you have light going upwards or anywhere it's not wanted, that's wasted energy. If you're able to reflect that light or focus it with a lens, you can use a less intense bulb and save energy and still adequately light the places you want to have light. bulb and save energy and still adequately light the places you want to have light. This last note is on lighting context. If you look at the cafe on the left, it looks pretty well lit until they go and build a, an overly lit auto sales next door. So, the idea of lighting context is, in some areas, you can get away with a lot less light. In other areas, you kind of need more. And also, if you can prevent the areas that need less light from becoming areas that need more light, that's a good thing. We'll talk about light levels. In terms of foot candles, this is the measurement that we use and professional societies use. The human eye can adapt to a whole lot of different light levels. A bright sunny beach can be way above 20, 30,000 foot candles even, and then when you get down to full moon, it's .01 foot candles, and you can still make out objects and colors almost. So, the eye's got a whole big range, and so some of these numbers are things to keep in mind when we get into the levels that we have proposed. So, where did this come from? It came from the Comprehensive Plan. There's an implementation strategy that says to address the zoning, amend the ordinance to address appropriate private property lighting standards for commercial and industrial areas. I guess I should mention, this is an ordinance for lighting on private property, so it doesn't affect street lighting or anything like that. Those are all covered by separate guidelines. In general, the zoning ordinance only addresses issues on private property. And the 2005, or City Council goals also mention adopting lighting standards, so it's another reason we're here. Before I get into this ordinance in a detailed level, let me just talk about how we got here. This has been a collaborative effort. We started out doing some research about three months. We researched at least, I'm going to say, well over 20 different ordinances we found and tried to look through and quantify what kind of limits they have. So, we did all kinds of combing of numbers from different ordinances across the country and focusing on some of the, some of the Illinois ordinances, like Homer Glen and Town Normal. Let's see, what else? Professional guidebooks. We ordered the IESNA guides, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America. We have a couple of them here. We just ordered them last fall, and incidentally, they do mention full cutoff lighting in these, so that's something weird. I guess it's a, it's a rapidly evolving field. We did a search of the Planner's Advisory Service. They gave us some advice, different other guidelines from New Hampshire and different states. We talked to other planners at Normal, at Champaign. We went to conference sessions. We got a good presentation on the Homer Glen ordinance when we had our state planning conference last summer, or last fall. That was very informative. So, we spent all kinds of research done. After that, we started drafting the ordinance and other collaborative efforts, working community developments, building safety and planning, public works with engineering. We worked with legal, reviewed it, the police department reviewed it, lots of internal review. And then we, when we finally had a good enough draft, we sent it out for external review. We sent it to a few different architecture firms, some lighting professionals, Tom Burtness, Phillips McCully and Associates. They gave us all kinds of great feedback. We also met with them and just got even more feedback, and they helped us adjust our numbers in some areas. I'll talk about those when we get to the numbers. Let's see, after the drafting process, we went to Plan Commission. We had, it went there February 5th. We had our first public hearing. I think it went back to the next meeting, and then the March 5th meeting was the final time at Plan Commission. There were no comments from the public, but we got great comments from Plan Commission, and we incorporated those. And we also had, in that, in between that time, we also had a developer's luncheon, which we presented it to the developers, and we got lots of comments. Well, actually, only a couple of comments from the luncheon, but they were good comments. We got those incorporated. All right, now to the slide we have here, the ordinance itself. Purpose of the ordinance is to promote Comprehensive Plan goals, provide modern lighting standards for private property, protect against trespass and nuisances, promote sufficient lighting and energy conservation, and promote safe and secure environments, and to establish an appropriate lighting context. The next section is definitions. There's some key terms, like how bright is a foot candle, and what is light trespass exactly? And the uniformity ratio, that's a very key term for safety and security. For our ordinance, we're using a maximum to minimum uniformity ratio. Some other towns use maximum, I'm sorry, use average to minimum. But we chose maximum to minimum because that's what they had guidelines for in the IESNA There's other more technical definitions in there that support the main definitions. Okay, applicability. We're proposing the ordinance come into effect July 1st in order to give developers time to familiarize themselves with the requirements. New fixtures would be required to comply with the requirements, and new lighting systems would be required to provide a plan showing how the system meets all the requirements. For this ordinance, we're defining systems as a new installation of more than three lights, or replacement of more than three lights, or replacement of more than 20% of Existing lights, there's going to be some retroactive requirements. If they cause glare that's a hazard or a nuisance, then the city shall ask for those lights to be removed or shielded so they're no longer nuisance. There's a distinction in the ordinance between single-family duplex properties and the rest of the properties, your multifamily, your commercial, your industrial. We're proposing a two-tiered system. Single-family and duplex properties are only required to meet the requirements on glare, not having any glare, not being a nuisance, and also just meeting the requirements for facade lighting and landscape lighting, whereas the other types of properties will have to meet the other requirements we're going to, we're about to talk about. And this last point is key. An alternative lighting plan may be accepted if it meets IESNA standards. This is a, we did a lot of research and tried to do as good as we could, but it's, it's hard to account for every possible situation. And thankfully, there are lots and lots of these guidebooks that provide guidance on lighting, so if, so there's a security concern or concern about the age of the population using the facility, and they can't meet the guidelines in the ordinance, we just ask that they show that they meet the IESNA guidelines. So, quick, quickly, I'll go through these requirements. Again, the limit on glare and nuisances for all properties, facade and landscape controls. For facade lighting, we just want it to be on, projected onto the facade and not escape and go into the neighbor's yard. For the greater requirements, we're asking for a photometric plan. This is something that the, a professional, a lighting professional could provide, or the manufacturers, the lighting systems, they'll provide these also. And we just like to see kind of a matrix of lighting levels in all the areas that are intended to be lit, specifications for all the fixtures and poles, a little box that shows what's the average level, where the uniformity ratios. And also, if they have, after our security plan, we'd like to see which areas are going to be lit there. There's requirements for full cutoff fixtures. Lots of different ordinances we've reviewed, talked about different types of fixture requirements. Some would require cutoff, some would require full cutoff. The distinction is, in cutoff versus full cutoff, I think there's a percentage of light that can go above the 90-degree angle. But in all the other ordinances we looked at, no one had adopted the BUG standards, and that's why we chose not to do that. Also, in talking with Phillips McCully, they said that most of their manufacturers have not yet, they're not yet providing data sheets that have the BUG standards, those, I think, 20 different numbers. That's why we chose not to do that. What else? The actual requirements. These are some specific numbers. We can talk about them if you'd like. They're derived from all kinds of things, from the survey of ordinances. We took averages and tried to get a range and see what's the generally acceptable range in other ordinances, and we tried to be a little conservative on that if we could. And we talked to lighting professionals, like I said. At Phillips McCully, they persuaded us that our original uniformity ratio of 15 to 1 might be hard to meet, so we think we should maybe have a requirement of 20 to 1 uniformity ratio for most cases. And that's also what the IESNA guidelines are, so. All kinds of input from the vendor, the professionals and other ordinances, and talking amongst ourselves is how we came up with these different numbers. Average levels, looking at other ordinances, they ranged all around from 1.6 up to, I think, 4.5 in some towns. We thought 1.0 would be good enough for residential zones. That's what the town of Normal has, and we thought it should be a little brighter in the commercial areas. It's hard to distinguish between 1.0 and 2.5 once you're out there, so we can, but that's pretty much, 2.5 is around the average of what other towns were doing. Gas canopies, we did a survey of the town here in Normal. The average was about 32 over the 15 places I surveyed. IESNA recommends a limit of 10, so we thought we'd meet a happy medium of 15 for that one. These other display areas, entrances, things, we are recommending higher levels for safety And the final requirement is requiring a photo sensor or timer. We want to know that when the sun comes up, that the lights will be turned off. And also, after the close of business, an hour after that, we'd like to see the lights turned down by 67%, just so it's not wasted. And they're still allowed to have 33% of their total lumens of light to provide security. I think that's most of everything. The exceptions, these are, actually, they've been moved to the applicability section now, but things like headlights on vehicles, temporary holiday festival lighting, street lights, traffic signals, we just wanted to explicitly exempt those, along with any lighting required by law. For instance, automated teller machines have a state statute that say how bright the area around those has to be, and the uniformity ratios also. So, anything required by law, of course, would be exempt. And our recommendation is to approve as presented, and we'd be happy to take your questions now.
Sounds like you've really done a lot of vetting with it, so that's all good. I have one question. Do you think that it's going to be July 1, right, 2009? So, nobody's grandfathered in. People have to make changes?
Yeah, most things are grandfathered in. Only new systems and new fixtures would be required to meet the requirements.
Okay, and then, okay, and then the other thing, just to be clear. Take, for example, the gas station canopies. The way I understood you speaking about it, it's, the lighting was 15 that you recommended, but most of them are at 32?
The average is 32.
Okay, and so you're recommending a lower light level? Hmm, and you guys feel comfortable with the safety related to that?
Like I said, the professional society recommends even lower.
10, yeah, I hear you. And that's the professional society, and not necessarily people who are actually, women who are actually gassing their cars up at night at 10 o'clock.
There were a couple that were below 15, and I think the light level is fine there. It's, it's hard, when it's next to one that's a lot brighter, it seems dark, but when it's out on its own, 10 is plenty. So, 15 would be.
I know when I'm driving and I'm looking for a gas station, I'm going to end up going at night where it's the brightest. I mean, whether that or not, I'm safer in reality, I don't care. What I care about is my perception of the moment in my head, and so.
And that's why they have them so bright.
I hear you. Yeah, so there's something to that.
Yeah.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to not ask a couple of questions I had now, but in case, I don't know, Charlie or if others were considering amendments or sending this to committee, that maybe because of the length of the agenda and that we have an outside presenter here tonight, if we are going to do committee, that, did we do that and save our amendments and save some of our debate until next time when there's thorough time for it? I appreciate staff's work, and this is really important.
Charlie?
Yeah, I would like to send this to committee, because I think there are a number of questions. But first, I'd like to commend Jeff and staff for their hard work on this, because this is a very complicated and very difficult topic. Just to, just to sort of catch us up with where, where the IES, where IES and the Dark Sky Association are, let me just refer, read you a couple of things. The Model Lighting Ordinance is released for review. They have a section, "To Better Understand the MLO," review the new BUG backlight, uplight glare system. And as you may recall, I mentioned this about six months or so ago, that that was coming. Okay, "For three years, the IDA and the Illuminating Engineering Society have collaborated on the creation of a Model Lighting Ordinance, the MLO, a breakthrough piece of civil legislation designed to promote universal implementation of energy-efficient, dark-skies-friendly community outdoor lighting plans. Five lighting zones of differing stringencies tailor the MLO to local needs and preferences while remaining consistent with the latest energy code criteria. The MLO was tested in Anchorage, Alaska in 2008, and adjusted to ensure ease of adoption in most communities. The MLO is open to public review until Friday, April 10 of 2009, and anyone can comment, regardless of their membership, and they give a website to go to where you can review the ordinance." It's a fairly complicated ordinance, okay, and I'm sure that Jeff is familiar. So, what I'm, what I would like us to think about is along these lines. Maybe what we want to do is tailor the ordinance to be a sort of either/or type situation. Either, you know, you go with the full cutoff, or you conform to the MLO, MLO standards of BUG. And so we adopt BUG, and we adopt full lighting, full cutoff, so that we, you know, I love full cutoff. I mean, it's wonderful lighting, but at the same time, BUG gives you a tiny bit of flex- bit of flexibility, and you also, I also recognize that using BUG, you actually also address the glare component, which is actually the really, you know, really dangerous piece of lighting. So it's more complicated, it's more advanced, but it does get you a quantitative measure of the significant issue, which is glare. I'm very concerned that we, that we move towards an ordinance that encourages sufficient and proper lighting, that we don't overlight stuff. Overlighting results in a lot of uplight to the atmosphere, the reflected light that's going on. And we need to put a stop to the situation that Lynn is alluding to, where people are just trying to make themselves brighter and brighter, shouting themselves out, in effect, you know, advertising themselves with, by creating this false perception of safety. You know, it's that contrast that Jeff showed in a couple of the pictures. One is, you know, the restaurant by itself was fine until somebody really came in overly bright. And that's, it's that contrast that makes for the perceptions that we have of one place being safer than the other, when, if everything were properly lighted to proper levels of illumination as recommended by IES, we'd all be perfectly safe. I'm also concerned with why we shouldn't give gas stations a pass. I mean, we do need to bring that level down, because they're shouting. And that's what I'm after. Let's get the shouters under control. And along those same lines, I really think that, you know, over a 10- or 20-year period, we should be considering what we really want to grandfather, and what we want to have phased out over a proper economic time. So that's another issue I'd like to bring up. Yeah, so the whole grandfathering issue. And finally, I will, yeah, two more issues. I remind you that Tom Burton has actually sent us an email a couple of months ago about the MLO. And in there, he said he wishes everybody would adopt the MLO, as it's in there. And then finally, I'd like to, in our discussion, I'd like to know why you want to exempt families and duplexes, and what exactly you mean there. Again, is it the brightness issue? You know, are we going to allow people to overly light that, you know, maybe, maybe they might be using full cutoff, but you can make full cutoff so bright that it shines and bounces up into the sky? So again, I don't want to, I don't want to have the, you know, I want to control the shouting effect, sort of thing. So with that said, I, you know, other people should comment, but I would like to move to send this to committee.
Robert Lewis had a comment.
I just want to thank Jeff for all the work you guys put into this. I know it's a very tedious thing to do, especially looking at all the cutoff fitting fixtures and all the lighting issues. But there's two areas that I want the council to be cognizant of as they review this in the future, and that's the lighting context is the critical one, and energy efficiency is the other one. So you can talk about illumination, you can talk about candle power, all these things, but the real concern is whether or not the lighting is used in the proper context, and if, in fact, that lighting is energy efficient. Those are the two elements. Take all this other stuff that they're debating, and cutoffs, and glare, and all these other issues, but there's two fundamental ones that we need to really make sure we have nailed. And that would be the context of the lighting. It could be cutoff, it could be using the total spectrum of the room, or, you know, we could gear it down to make sure it's in a proper context, and make sure it's energy efficient. And I think that would serve us well for the next 20 years. Thanks.
If I could speak to the efficiency issue, we did look at the LEED standards and the MLO and things like that. The state Energy Code actually regulates lighting efficiency, and we feel that that's an adequate level of regulation there. That's why we didn't include any requirements for efficiency in this. In terms of the MLO, Model Lighting Ordinance, we did see that a few months ago when Tom Burton had sent it out, and it was, it was kind of rough back then. There were a lot of references that were totally missing, and things like quantifying glare, which I hope is in there by now, that's something I'd like to see. But we, at the time, we just didn't feel it was ready for prime time.
Dennis.
We've had some pretty large developments recently in, you know, outlying areas of our community that may or may not meet some of the criteria that we're about to adopt, but they're going to be, I guess, grandfathered, because they do exist today. So I'm wondering if the city, and I'm thinking about specific ones where it must be that the, for the safety reasons, the 20 to 1 ratio is, looks more like it's 10 to 1, where the overillumination is pretty obvious in the evening sky. So I'm wondering if there's, if we might look at or consider some kind of initiative program for encouraging, or first of all, educating the commercial and industrial neighbors that we have here in town of energy-saving use or remodeling or retrofitting existing units with more efficient lighting, and offering them solutions to help not only them save their, on their lighting bills during the month, but help reduce the glare that's obvious in the sky around their units. And I don't know if they're, I think first, education would be useful in helping to create some changes to bring the whole entire city perhaps closer to our engine, energy goals. But also, I wonder if we might want to talk about, you know, having initiatives to bring about faster change. I know if you have recently, you know, installed lighting, you know, let's say in the last seven to 10 years, it's not yet outdated, probably has a good, you know, life, you might have, you know, 10 more years of good life ahead of you. And it's a long time perhaps to wait for light fixture changes that might be beneficial sooner, not only energy-wise and financially, but for the environment. So it might be something worthwhile talking about in conjunction with this is initiatives to bring us, bring, bring all of our community into a more of a compliant state.
David. Okay. Any other discussion? Heather.
Clearly, even though there's grandfathering in, the city will have to, if we're going to pass an ordinance, I'm sure there's some projects that we are, we are going to have to look at. So what I'd like to see when this comes back is what our numbers are, what it's going to look like financially for us.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we'll see this at the next committee meeting. And thank you very much, Jeff. Next, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, revisions to Section 6.5 yards. This is ordinance number 2009-03-019. And Robert Myers is here.
This is proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, excuse me, to address situations where you have replacement garages in existing neighborhoods, in which the existing, or the new garage can't go back in the exact spot where the old garage is. And sometimes that's a problem when the pattern of garages is to be right on the property line, or right next to the property line. You've got your existing concrete driveway leading up to that garage, and then the garage becomes decrepit after a number of years, and you need to replace it, and lo and behold, under the existing zoning, you can't do it. You have to move over the garage another 18 inches. And then your driveway no longer lines up with your garage. What seems like, in one way you could look at it, what's the big deal? Just move your garage over an extra 18 inches and be done with it. But for a number of homeowners in established neighborhoods, that actually comes with some difficulty, and also can change the pattern of the neighborhood over a period of time. And this was brought to our attention by a recent case where someone wanted to rebuild a garage right on the property line where the old garage was, and under our zoning ordinance could not do so, they applied for variance. The Zoning Board of Appeals approved it by a majority vote, but did not receive, it did not receive a two-thirds supermajority, so therefore, the variance was not passed. That brought the case to our attention, but we found that there were other cases at the Zoning Board of Appeals asking for the very same thing in the previous years. And so that prompted us to reexamine our zoning ordinance for garages in older neighborhoods, and that's why we're bringing this forward. What this would do is, it would allow replacement garages on these narrow lots in older established neighborhoods to be put back where they are in certain cases. And it would also allow something new or different, in that if you've got two adjoining garages on neighboring properties, and they're only two feet apart, but they're on different properties, this would allow, if the property owners agree, you could actually build adjoining garages, where, so then you no longer have this two-foot gap between the two garages, whereas as someone in the public said, only a possum can run. That's the only thing that's good for. That was, that was something that someone from the public mentioned at the city, uh, Plan Commission meeting. The Plan Commission reviewed this case at their February 19 and March 5 meetings, and the Plan Commotion, Plan Commission voted five yes and zero no to forward this case to City Council with a recommendation for approval. City Council, or City Staff likewise recommends approval.
Charlie?
I'd like to move approval.
Second?
If I could speak to the motion.
Is that you seconded? Who seconded? Okay. All right. Motion by Charlie and seconded by Dennis, I think. Yes, Charlie?
Yeah, I sent around an email today from the New Marx. They apologized for not being able to make it tonight, but a prior commitment, but they're very supportive of this, you know, and, you know, it was, I think this is a great thing for the, for many of our older neighborhoods. And in fact, I love the addition of the ability to build these double garages across the harbor lane. There actually are some that exist. There's one that's falling down on the alleyway on the south side of Illinois Street. If you go down, I forget, there's 400 or 500 block west, there's, there's one of these exactly, and now they could rebuild it without any, without any issues. So I think it's, this is a great, a great outcome from the Plan Commission. I'd like to thank everybody for their work and for taking their time to put this together. I think it's, it's right.
Anything else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance number 2009-03-020, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2009-03-014 regarding the approval of a preliminary development plan for planned unit development, and this was the neighbor house, 1002 South Lincoln Avenue and 805 West Iowa Street. It was a small error, the wrong thing submitted?
Right. We're, we're needing to correct the mislabeled exhibit, and so what you have attached to the ordinance is the correct exhibit, which shows proposed development plan. Actually, this, you saw exactly this before, nothing is different whatsoever, we just need to correct the mislabeled exhibit.
I'd like to recommend approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smite?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2009-03-021, and ordinance approving and causing publication of the official zoning map of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Robert Myers.
State law in our zoning ordinance requires that this body adopt each year by April 1st a zoning map showing all the changes over the past year. So we have before you a proposed zoning map. This doesn't change the zoning anywhere in the city, what's already been adopted, it just reflects what's already happened. But we are fulfilling the state requirement to do so. I would like to note that last, late last week, two annexations that came before you with the Four Park District, Weber Park and Weaver Park, those came in effect late last week, and so this map was printed just before those came into effect. But if it's okay with you, before the mayor signs, I'd like to also show that on this official zoning map as well, since they have taken effect now. And both the Plan Commission and City Staff recommend approval.
Charlie?
So moved.
Seconded.
With the correction, with the additions of the two parks.
Motion by Smite, seconded by Roberts with the approval, with the corrections of the Park District properties. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smite?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is an ordinance number 2009-03-025, amending Section 19.40 of the Urbana City Code to extend the time for civilian police review board review. That's a lot of reviews in that title. And reauthorization. We had a deadline, I think, of the end of March, and due to some illnesses and some other pressing business, we haven't been able to do the contacting with everybody and hold the hearing. So this is, just to make sure that we can get it done in April without the ordinance expiring. Oh, we have Todd Rint here to explain all that.
Yeah, I think you've done a thorough job explaining it. We were just asking for a 30-day extension. In the memo that we submitted with the packet, you see the planned rollout of the review and reauthorization plan, or the review and reauthorization process. So I'm here to take any questions that you may have.
I'd like to recommend approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smite?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Resolution number 2009-03-014R, resolution in support of expanding low-power FM radio service. Mr. Garrick? Oh, oh, we, I'm sorry. Well, Mr. Garrick can still present it, and then we'll have the public input.
Well, the basic idea is that there are, there's a kind of, there's a kind of radio station, low-power FM, which literally runs with enough power to run 100-watt light bulb. It's designed with the idea that there are spaces in the broadcast spectrum in which there aren't major broadcasters, and that those spaces allow the opportunity for smaller community stations to come into being. The problem is that the, between the time that the, this was initially proposed and the National Association of Broadcasters was through with it, we got something that said basically, yeah, you can have these little stations in the cracks in the spectrum, but by the way, there are no cracks in the spectrum, that there, in the 50 major radio markets, there are, there was room for exactly one of these stations. We are lucky enough to have one of these stations at WRFU, and I think that what we'd like to do is, through this symbolic, through this resolution, tell the FCC that the rest of the country should have it so good.
Are you making a motion?
Um, I'd like to, to do the public.
Andrew O'Boyle, is that how you pronounce your name? Could you please put your address and give your remarks to the line of the question?
Certainly, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Andrew O'Boyle, I'm a Urbana resident, I live at 503 South Race, and I'm also the station manager of WRFU, which is one of the low-power stations that David talked about. The low-power FM service is something that the FCC introduced in 2000 as a means, as David said, to allow new David said, to allow new, non-commercial, community-based stations to come into being. Because of the shortage of space on the broadcast spectrum, there are very few opportunities for new radio stations to come into, into being. Smaller, lower-powered stations can fit into spaces, into smaller, as they've put it, cracks than, than higher-powered stations. The FCC proposed in 2000 that they would license this new service. The National Association of Broadcasters and other vested interests urged Congress, convinced Congress that there were technical difficulties that would make this problematic for existing broadcasters. Subsequent engineering studies ordered by Congress have found that that is not the case. But to this point in time, the FCC has been ruled, has been ordered to only allow a small number of stations, those that have larger cracks to fit into, so to speak. There is currently before Congress an act, the Local Community Radio Act of 2009, which would reverse some of the limitations that were put in at the urging of these vested interests. It has previously come before Congress. It has gained over 100 cosponsors. It's a bipartisan bill. What I would like the council to do with, in passing this motion, is to show that, that on the one hand, the service, the service that a city like Urbana has received is valued and brings value to the community, and as David said, that other cities and other communities around the country should have the opportunity to have such services. WRFU has been on air since 2005. We've had dozens of different community groups and individuals produce their own programming. We bring the only Spanish-language daily news programming to the community from 2:00 to 4:00 every day. That's Radio Belengue. We have groups from our local mosque, from evangelical churches, from undergrads, grad students. So this, I say this to show examples of the sort of community engagement and involvement that a service like this has provided to Urbana, and as the motion suggests, that would be beneficial, that the motion is passed would show that Urbana feels that this is something that's valued, and that would be of benefit to other cities had they the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Garrick? Would you be able to provide us an address at the FCC that would be most effective to send this resolution to?
I would, I would suggest if you, I was going to say the chair, the acting chairperson of the FCC would be the, would be the appropriate person, I would suggest.
Isn't it a question of lobbying Congress to pass the law?
There are two, well, there are two, there are two things. I know the resolution suggested it, that it be sent to our congressional delegation, I believe, and also a copy to the FCC.
How is our congressional delegation on this?
Our congressional delegation, the Representative Johnson, I believe, is not currently a cosponsor of the resolution that has been...
He is.
Is he currently?
Yeah. And how about Burris and Durbin?
I'm afraid I'm not, I'm not familiar with the situation.
We need to know that.
I have, can I speak? Sure. HR 1147, sponsor of Representative Michael F. Dole of Pennsylvania, looks like District 14 there. And it has, on February 24th, 2009, with, at that time, 35 cosponsors, and Tim was one of them.
Then we can talk to our senators, too. Okay, anyone else?
I'm looking at the House bill, so I...
Yeah, well, it's a House bill, and it has to go to the Senate eventually. Mr. Garrick, did you want to make a motion?
I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Garrick, seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. You know, I think this is a really important part of our radio freedom, to have small stations and local broadcasting. And one would hope that the FCC acting, you know, on behalf of the community, the federal, you know, the Federal Communication Corporation, or FCC, would be a safeguard for the human rights that we have, or as far as freedom of speech in the airway. And we know that depending on the influence of corporations and the administration at hand, you may or may not get support for these kinds of important things. So lobbying and asking that our example and our freedom remain and be expanded seems totally logical and useful to the city of Urbana, and so I would support it.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, and finally, the big broadband project, sorry to keep you waiting so long, Mike Smeltzer from the University of Illinois.
I brought you gifts.
A horse.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Finding your role.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Just to give the home viewers something better to look at than me. This is one of these alternate computers now. Let's see what happens. Thank you. With all due respect to Harvey Milk, I'm Mike Smeltzer, and I'm here to recruit you. The university and the cities of Urbana and Champaign have an opportunity that's been created by the federal stimulus program to invest in broadband. There is $7.2 billion, excuse me, that's been dedicated specifically to support broadband projects throughout the country, projects that would serve underserved areas, unserved areas, vulnerable populations, projects which would support public safety, a variety of medical, there's a whole cascade of things that this program will support. I've been a proponent of the community building a broadband fiber network for quite some time, and this is probably the best opportunity I've seen in the last 10 years to actually get this done, because the federal government will match 80% of the money that we come up with locally to get it started. So what I've put together, and you are the first public body to officially be seeing this, but the name of the project is UC2B, and seeing how Urbana is first in there, I figure if I talk to Urbana first, is a consortium between the university, Champaign, and Urbana, with many other partners playing an important role. But because this anticipates a fiber build throughout the community with conduits and manholes and things in your streets, it seems to me that it makes sense for the three people that have streets and manholes to put conduits in, to be the owners of that infrastructure. The booklet I gave you goes into a very long-winded explanation about why it makes sense to have public ownership of this infrastructure. The short version is, is that the people that own the communications infrastructure today are essentially the telephone companies and the cable companies. And they're not bad people, but they are operating in a way that maximizes the value to their shareholders, not necessarily maximizes the value to the community. What's good for Comcast is not necessarily good for Urbana. What's good for AT&amp;T is not necessarily good for Champaign. And what's good for both of them is not necessarily good for the university. So in other parts of the world where broadband adoptions is higher than it is in the United States, where speeds are faster in the United States, there's a consistent pattern of government involvement in helping fund broadband development. And that's what this federal legislation does. The Obama administration believes in this. You'll probably see more of this coming from them in the future, but this is the first wave of their effort to promote a broadband initiative across the country. Federal stimulus is an important part of it. But I think in Urbana, you have already made some strides along these lines. I mean, Bill DiGiannetta has already been doing some fiber building to connect some of your facilities to each other. There's a bill going on right now, which is going to bring in the schools, or a few of the schools. So you've already recognized the fact that fiber connectivity between your facilities has inherent value to the city, just in terms of doing your day-to-day business, running the courts, running the police station, running the fire stations. Their proposal before you would actually finish the job that Bill had started in a rather grand way. It would get all of your fire stations, it would get all of the senior citizen living facilities, it would get all of your schools, and it would actually build some areas that even Charlie might be interested in out in the south farms there, where allegedly there will be a new crop sciences building someday, and maybe there will be a new Urbana fire station at some point. Those are areas right now where the university doesn't even have fiber. This plan would cover a certain part of Windsor Road, and would also pick up some of what's one south of that old church as well. This is at the early stages, but it's going to have to be fast-tracked. I'm not here to ask you tonight for money, but I am asking, or here tonight to ask you to authorize City staff to begin talking to Champaign, to begin talking to the university, most likely to begin talking, have the attorneys start talking to the attorneys, because ultimately it may make the most sense to have a corporation that's formed by those three entities apply for this grant. It may not be possible to get, no offense to attorneys, to get three attorneys representing three diverse interests to agree on what that entity may look like within 60 or 90 days, but that may be all the time we have to actually file an application. So I've been having discussions with the research folks at the university about the possibility of the university actually filing the grant application, but there's some, there's some good things and there's some bad things that would come along with that. So I think if your attorney and the university's attorney and Champaign's attorney were to sit down and look through that, they may come back to you with a recommendation that, yes, it makes sense to have the university do this, or no, maybe it doesn't make sense, and there'd be some other way of going about doing this. Because there is the 20% local match in the federal stimulus program for broadband, this is going to cost something. And what I, in the booklet, you'll see there's a long list of potential partners in this, the school districts, the park districts. There are, the Carl and Bucy would also be potential partners. Carl has facilities all over town, they pay a great deal of money to connect them to each other. Same thing for Bucy Bank. Not just Bucy Bank, the ULI Credit Union, the new Free Star Bank. Any organization that has needs to move great amounts of data from point A to point B and wants to do it in a secure fashion would benefit from this, and they could be investors in that original network. When this was first getting started, the provost asked that we kind of define an area for a target, and with the target we defined was called the Bradley Avenue Corridor. I don't know that anybody else ever calls it the Bradley Avenue Corridor, but that's what we're calling it for this. And it's essentially the area that's bounded by Interstate 74 in the north, Route 45 on the east, University Avenue on the south, and Mattis Avenue on the far west. In the map in your booklet, you'll see that's been divided into, I think, 12 different zones, and probably zones 11 and 12 in there would not qualify as underserved or areas under the Federal Communication Commission. But the rest of the areas very well might. And so that is an area where we're proposing to build a broadband to the residents, to the building, to the business, to the church. Technically, it's fiber to the premise is the technical term for it. It doesn't have to be fiber for the last 100 feet. Fiber is kind of the Cadillac solution today. We know it works, we know it works very well. It may very well be the cheapest technology to support in the long run, but it may not. It could be wireless for the last 100 feet or the last 200 feet. There are folks in the room that are strong proponents of wireless, and I wouldn't necessarily disagree. Fiber is, if I were doing it for my house, I'd want fiber. And if we're going to do the low-income sections of town, I would just as soon start with that and give them the best solution we know how to have, know how to put in right now, and not do one thing here and then later turn around and do something better or someplace else. And everyone has their own definition of better. So at this point, this is worded as a fiber project for those areas. When I was doing the financial number crunching on this, it became apparent that just doing the north end of town didn't really help the school district. You pick up three or four schools, but in Champaign, they've got 17 buildings they'd like to get to. Same thing for Urbana, you've got more buildings. Picking up your fire station on North Lincoln doesn't do you any good on file of road. So the project kind of expanded to build fiber rings throughout the community to pick up some of these facilities that are both public and privately needed, so that those can be on the network right away. For instance, Unit 4 Schools in Champaign spend roughly $400,000 a year to connect their schools to each other. One might argue the wisdom of them spending that much money on that, but that's what they're currently doing. So for them to spend maybe 1.2, 1.6 million to buy into this and own their own fiber for the rest of their lives is a pretty easy investment for them to think their way through. I haven't actually asked them that yet, but that's coming. The university has some plans to build fiber in a couple places in campus that this project would take care of. The university would like to get better connectivity to the new supercomputing center. The university would like better connectivity to the research park. We'd eventually like to get fiber out to Willard Airport. This takes care of a lot of kind of the pending things that need to be done with the university's fiber network. And I'm sure Bill wouldn't mind actually having your current fiber network turned into rings rather than just being linear. And there's a page in, there's a section in this, I don't remember the page number, that if you really wanted to skip everything else, there's a, "Why should the city of Urbana invest?" I think it's page 14. And the reasons that are specific to Urbana are in there. One of the big things, and I'm on the Champaign Library Board because I live in Champaign, is Lincoln Trails and how the libraries communicate with Lincoln Trails. There's an organization in the state called ICN, which is the Illinois Century Network. The Urbana library has a connection to ICN, Lincoln Trails has a connection to ICN. Neither of those connections are particularly fast right now, although Urbana's about to rev it's up much faster. In fact, Urbana library's connection to ICN will be much faster than Lincoln Trails connection. Every time you check out a book in Urbana, or every time you check out a book in Champaign, the computers in the library have to talk to Lincoln Trails out on the north side of Champaign. If that connection gets congested, or that connection goes down, it does very bad things for the library. This plan would put private fiber all the way from the Urbana Free Library and the Champaign Public Library, and the Douglas branch of the Champaign Public Library, all the way out to Lincoln Trails. So they would have a dedicated connection that could go literally hundreds times faster than what it goes now, and it would not involve that internet connection, which has been a real sore point for the folks at Lincoln Trails. There just isn't any fiber out there, so what they're doing now is just using telephone lines the best they can. What else is there to tell you? Because the fiber rings are now extending throughout the community in this plan, it doesn't need to be limited to just the Bradley Avenue Corridor if we're looking for low-income areas. My guess is that if we were to sit down with the demographic maps, we could probably find some other areas in Urbana and some other areas in Champaign where the average income or whatever measure you want to use for defining low income or need would probably qualify. In the timetable you see before you, I'm doing the Bradley Avenue Corridor first in the first summer, and coming back and doing the rings to the south in the other areas in the second summer. That's just literally a matter of how much work there is to do and how much time it would take to be done. If we get funded, the money has to be totally spent within two years, and we think the funding will come out sometime in the September, maybe October timeframe. So that gives us two reasonably long summer construction seasons to build fiber. When the ground's frozen, you don't want to be out there digging, so you kind of lose December-ish through March. This time of year is about the right time to start building fiber. So the plan would be to get everything ready, get it submitted to the government, get approved, get the engineering studies done once we're funded, and start building about a year from today, give or take. On that, I'll entertain some questions.
Okay. Thank you. Robert?
You said, "Start digging." Have you pursued or looked at the possibility of the boring techniques that they're using now?
Yes, and I was using digging in a relatively general sense. This would most likely be directional board everywhere, although there's still a certain amount of digging you have to do to get manholes in.
Sure.
Directional boring is far less invasive, although occasionally you have little surprises as you're going through it.
I understand.
Dennis?
So you have proposed a series of rings to be engaged upon to take the fiber throughout the entire community.
Yes.
But for the first two years, you're asking for funding for the Bradley Ring, the north, it's called the Bradley Avenue, the North, Champaign North Ring, the CN? Is that correct?
Yes.
The blue, the dark blue one?
The initial investment would, what it would do for the City of Urbana, what it would give you is X numbers of strands on each one of the four rings that run through the city that you could do whatever really you wanted to. In terms of construction, if we find out in October we have funding, it could easily take three to four months to get the engineering studies done and just to do the two north rings, the one in Champaign and the one in Urbana, as well as the detailed construction for that Bradley Avenue Corridor. That's probably about as much as we could hope to do in one construction season. But the money would, it would be a one-time expenditure by the city and it would be a one-time expenditure by the government, and in the following summer, or if we got more done in the first summer, that'd be fine, but I'm not anticipating getting all that done, just in one construction season.
So our participation would cover the entire structural layout of the system as we see it here?
Yes.
All the four or five rings of color?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
And there's actually a Champaign ring that veers into Urbana, and there's an Urbana ring that veers into Champaign, but that's just to give redundancy to... I should mention, all of these rings start and stop at one of the university's communications nodes, which means the university will be involved in managing this for, at least initially, and maybe forever. Because Urbana would actually want fiber, you don't really have any need to get on and off the ring, and the university's communications nodes, there would actually then be additional fiber that would go from one node to the next. So if a ring started in node one and went to node nine, there would be additional fibers between, so your ring could just be spliced all the way through, and you can get on and off then wherever you want. Yes?
On your cost sharing, you have Champaign at $920,000 and Urbana at $567,000. When we've done things in the past, you know, it's roughly based on population, so it would be roughly, Champaign would be roughly twice what Urbana is, so I wondered what the calculation was.
This is a formula that's very subject to change, but I needed to crank some numbers, and it's based on the distance of the rings and the numbers of fibers that you would have on the rings. And you might say, "Well, I don't really need 12 fibers on that ring, I could go with eight, or four, I don't want any." But I tried to anticipate what the city's needs were, and the rings in Champaign are longer, but they're not twice as long necessarily as the rings in Urbana. So it's somewhat a function of the cost of constructing the infrastructure.
Would, I mean, how many miles would there be in Champaign versus Urbana?
I didn't figure it that way. There's a total of 101 miles of fiber throughout both communities, and that ends, that ends it, because in some places, there's two strands going side by side. It's about 70 miles of infrastructure in terms of boring and manholes. I could break it down to just Urbana and Champaign, I haven't done that yet.
Okay, because we'd be interested in what the cost is, obviously.
And any costing figures you see before you are really just a starting point for the discussion, absolutely. Nothing's been decided, and there may be far more clever people than me who can come up with better formulas for how to best share the cost.
Who's next?
Well, let me just ask you again. So, so the cost that we're looking at takes the communities past the initial pilot program, is that correct? Or is this your pilot program cost?
The pilot program, as I'm envisioning it, is the rings everywhere.
Oh, everywhere?
Everywhere.
Not just the Bradley Ring?
No, all, they're off, all eight rings. Bradley Avenue, fiber to the home, fiber to the business, and select other areas in Urbana or Champaign that look and feel economically like the Bradley Avenue Corridor. I haven't identified those yet, I don't, I don't know what those are, but I'm sure we can come up with that information. That would be the core initial project. That would then lay the groundwork to obviously do more ambitious things, not long, long-term, but my guess is that you're not going to get federal dollars to, you know, subsidize broadband for Cherry Hills. That doesn't seem likely. And I don't think I would ask for it. But there can be other funding mechanisms for other, other parts of town. But once the rings are there, that becomes much, much easier, and because the rings are going in initially, that gets all your schools, that gets all your fire stations, that's, the rings initially are what add value and make it worthwhile for the schools to invest, for the city to invest, for the county to invest.
Brendan, are you next?
Mike, thanks for this. This is, this is really interesting. I know I had gone to part of this one-day seminar that was at the university a few weeks ago where Mike, you and other people presented, so some of my questions come from things I started to hear about there. One of them is about how it gets operated. Obviously, once this is in the ground, the city can, you know, plug in the libraries and the fire stations and everybody much quicker than we'd hoped, so that's great, and we can run that ourselves. The operational question that is still to work through, of course, is how we get service to these people's homes. Like, what provider do they use, and do they pay a monthly fee for the service, or can we give free internet to every kid who's in Urbana Middle School or High School or something? All of those questions of how it gets operated over the years. So I guess I wondered from you, and I know that's still to be defined, what your vision is for how the UVI, Urbana and Champaign could collaborate on refining the operational piece of it, so that when the grant goes in, the whole picture is there?
I'm going to steal something from Joanne Hovis's presentation, and if you think of this as maybe a series of layers, and the first layer is just the fiber in the ground and the manholes. And that's when I'm advocating that the cities and the university own and maintain, maybe not necessarily maintain, but they own that, that's your asset. Somebody needs to operate that, those backbone networks to make that work. Now, that can be the university initially, I don't know if the university wants to be in that business forever, but for the two years and getting it started, we can probably do that. If everyone elects to form, let's say, a nonprofit corporation to run this, it could be that that corporation itself has employees and it hires people with technical skills to run that network. It could be it puts that out for bid just to run the broadband network. At some point in the future, it could be either privately run or publicly run. That part's not particularly important as long as it works. Where it gets interesting is the next layer up, that third layer, is what are the services? Now, today Comcast and soon AT&amp;T are going to try and sell, well Comcast is already trying, AT&amp;T's working on it, triple-play services over kind of combination fiber copper networks. Comcast has been doing it for years, the AT&amp;T U-verse program, what Charlie, you heard is going to come?
July.
July. Okay. Next July, they'll probably get to it, but, no. Okay, they're working on it. And what they're shooting for is somewhat based on the old model of telecommunications, but it's still working for them to a certain degree, is what they're calling triple-play. They want to give you a land-based phone for your home, they want to sell your internet service, they want to sell your television services. I don't think we're that far away, that that just may be an obsolete model if you give people a big enough internet pipe in the first place. My guess is that almost everyone in this room probably could care less about their home phone because they've got a cellphone in their pocket. Home phone lines are convenience, they're probably reasonable for businesses to have, you know, in 10 years from now, it wouldn't surprise me if half the people in this room no longer had a land-based phone line. People have voted for mobility, and that's one. I don't think quality on a cellphone is anywhere as near as good on your land phone, but they're certainly more, more flexible and usable. Television today is still, you know, cable companies somewhat control it. I'm working with a consolidated communications down in Mattoon. We've approached them, they do an IPTV service in their service area right now about becoming the first provider to offer services over this, so that as we go to the federal government, we say we've already got a company that's in the IPTV business that's willing to provide services over this. They're certainly not going to do that for free. There will be charges for that. IPTV can be a lot more customizable than what we're used to seeing from a cable company. If you really want a very standard tier, the peg channels, of course, and your local stations, you know, that's not very, that doesn't have to be very expensive, that doesn't have to be $40, which is what I heard coming from AT&amp;T. It may make sense to have internet bundled into the basic service. If I put fiber into your home and you get a little magic box, it's got a TV port, it's got a computer port, and it's got a phone port, but it doesn't do anything, are you going to pay me $10 a month to have that box? Well, probably not. You probably want to have some, at least one basic service that comes along with the box. So the university has the ability to buy internet fairly cheaply in Chicago and transport it down here over its own fiber network, and it may be, that would be a logical way to get relatively cheap bandwidth available for this project. The university's attorneys would have to change a few attitudes along the way to make that work, but that's certainly possible. So there will be services, and if you look at, you know, the area we're targeting first, my guess is there are a lot of homes there that don't have broadband services today. Probably, I'm going to guess a fair number of them do have television services, whether it be cable, whether it be satellite, a certain amount of money's been spent every month at least on that part. If we can squeeze the economics on this to the point where the cost of having a television service and an internet service is in the same ballpark of what people are paying today for a television service, then that's kind of a wash. It could be a better television service, and plus, they're going to get a very good internet connection out of the deal. I should add that there's a whole group of folks at the university and the Community Informatics Initiative that do a lot of work, actually, in this area we're talking about. They were, the original people are involved in Prairie Nets, they do a lot of after-school programs for children in that area, they do a lot of training. They're participating in these discussions, and those folks and some other folks will be very involved in figuring out what the programmatic needs are, because it's not just, "Let's put fibers in the ground and hook you up and walk away." There's going to be a training component to this. If we can get the money to work out, I'd just as soon get every school kid in this area a laptop as part of the deal, and propose that as part of the deal. The grant is loosely enough worded that that could work. It depends a little bit on what the support is. These grants are not necessarily just limited to public organizations, the private companies can file for them, public agencies can file for them. I'm hoping that when compared to a grant that, say, a small phone company in southern Illinois may produce, or any commercial entity, they're not going to have the follow-on research, they're not going to have the follow-on graduate students writing their dissertations about how well this worked. There's whole classes at the university that just deal in the digital divide, and how do you do things to help solve the digital divide, so you don't have haves and have-nots in this very important technology. I think I talk in the paper about President Obama's election. You know, the internet was particularly important to his ability to get elected. It has changed electoral politics forever. Those of you that are going to run for city council again are probably thinking, "How am I going to use the internet to get that done?" Well, what happens if a certain part of your community no longer has good access to the internet? Have you left them out of the political process? It's important for this part of the community to have as good access to the internet as everybody else. And it's kind of what we're trying to do, and that's really what the Community Informatics people, that's their thing. I'm a, I'm a wires and digging, boring guy, if you prefer. Boring, no matter which way you want to look at it. But they're looking at the programmatic needs, they'll be writing that part of the grant application to deal with those kinds of things.
You partially answered my question. I was asking about our chances of getting the grant if we move forward, and it sounds to me like what you're saying, it, they're, I mean, nothing's a sure thing, but we stand well positioned based on the support that we can muster.
We, we've been working with a Washington DC consultant, Joanne Hovis, who spoke here, and I believe her to be an honest person. She's working with a lot of communities that are doing similar things. She's pretty optimistic about our chances, given the reputation of the university, given the coalition we're trying to build of both public and private, and the fact that the university is not just going to be doing this, we're going to be studying it, we're going to be talking about it. The Gistless people want to create a national center for community informatics here and use this as kind of their research project to make that go.
And as a follow-up, I would just like to move that we support our staff to further investigate this.
Okay, motion by Barnes, second by Smythe. Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, a couple of questions for you, Mike. The, one of the things that concerns me is that our public school areas actually exceed, or, you know, are outside the boundaries of the cities. How do you serve that portion? Some of that may be underserved, census tract type stuff too. You know, long-term, how about addressing that?
Long-term, depending on how far outside of the city you're talking about, wireless would certainly be one way of getting the job done. The rings here, by the way, don't necessarily, you don't have to live inside the ring, just because the ring goes off to High Cross Road, it can go east or west of High Cross Road as well. The rings go both ways. Somebody looked at that and said, "Oh, you left the mayor's house out," and it really wasn't where that ring was supposed to go. The rings could go either direction. So you could, if you, I don't know that the city would have a vested interest in building fiber to an area of unincorporated area, the county necessarily.
I'm more concerned with public schools and not increasing the digital divide between those students who live within the city and those that live outside the city. For example, those who live in the cities of Urbana and Champaign get automatic library service, while those students in those schools don't, that live outside of either the two cities, don't have a library service, unless their parents are willing to pay for that. And, and I'm, you know, I'm concerned that we have the same situation here of, okay, if you live inside the city limits, you've got fiber, if you're outside the city limits, you're a public school student, you don't have fiber.
I have joked with the folks in Champaign that this might be a way of kind of putting an end to ever for the folks that like to live on the edge of the city but don't want annex into the city for one reason or another. You now have an overwhelming reason for them to want to annex in, but you're not talking about that particular situation. I think you're talking about people living a little farther out, that annexation's not a, not an option for them perhaps.
Maybe not.
Well, if, if someone's on the, if, if you take this to its logical conclusion, and 80 or 90% of the homes in Champaign, Urbana have access to fiber, and you have homes that are on the periphery that don't have access to fiber, what does that do to their housing values? What does that do to their ability to sell homes? I think you have a land or a rush of people that want to annex into the city so they can access the fiber. Not that this is a grow-the-city plan, but you could have that, that could be an unintended effect of it. But certainly wireless is one way of getting beyond this area to take care of that.
Well, I was thinking, you know, one, one way to deal with it is the school districts themselves could, could take it upon themselves to get outside the cities. So, and you addressed the issue of school district participation as cosponsors of sorts here. What about Savoy?
What about Savoy?
You said you wanted to get to the airport, you know, Savoy stands between them and us, you know?
I said that. I would like Savoy to participate. They have nowhere's near the vested interest in this that cities of Urbana and Champaign do, but the same way, you know, it's part of the doughnut that surrounds the university. At some point, I will go to them and give them the same spiel I'm giving you, but they just don't have the same infrastructure to support at this point. Plus, in some of the communities in Savoy right now, AT&amp;T is actually building fiber to the home, surprisingly enough. Now, you're stuck with AT&amp;T if you have AT&amp;T's fiber to the home, and I think long-term, that's not necessarily a good thing for anybody, but they will be less motivated to necessarily want to do that because of that.
Okay, and my last question is, how familiar are you with Burlington-Romans Municipal Fiber Project?
I've read a little bit about it. They've been reasonably successful with it. They're, I think, trying to do a broader area now than what they started out with, aren't they? Oh, it's, ah, one of the first position papers we did on this had, I don't know, five or six different communities that had done similar projects, and Burlington was one of the ones that we had, we had added to that. In Illinois, I think Highland, Illinois, has a, has a broadband project involving fiber of some sort, but there aren't a whole lot of others, and there aren't any that we found that had a major research university at the core of the project. That's what's truly unique about this, is the participation of the university. Now, I should say that the university has not committed itself to do this yet. I get to have these same kinds of discussions with the provost and the chancellor, and I think that it's, again, it's a compelling case for them because their participation, I know what's in our budget next year for fiber reinforcement on the campus network, and if we just spent that on this project, we'd get most of that done.
Yeah, I was going to say, the, the cost per capita is about $15, if you're, you know, your number's roughly for Urbana. So you consider the cost of cable and phone and everything, it's a very small price to pay for the saving. pay for the savings that you would get. So, Brendan?
Yeah, one more question. The operational is definitely a, a big one to figure out together. The second one is sort of the community engagement. I had heard there might be some town hall or something coming up, and definitely the, the librarians and the schoolteachers and the people at Douglas Branch and the people at King School, they should all be part of the group of people who have a say in, and can support this coming to their facilities in their neighborhood. So anything that they can do to be part of this is great. I wonder what, what is the town hall and what?
The Broadband Access Committee, which is a subcommittee of the CU Cable Commission, with John Mon and Peter, who's here, is on, and some other folks, are planning this, I want to say in mid to late April. There's a planning meeting later this month, and I think they're going to try and have it at the Douglas Center or at the Rex Center there. And that would be probably one of several meetings to try and get feedback. My part of it, if I'm really just worrying about where the cables go and you're putting the fiber to everyone's home, it's kind of easy. It just goes everywhere, and that, that's the end of discussion unless you don't want it. I can't, or I can't, the university can't, the city can't, put fiber to your home if you live in this area unless you sign an easement that says you can do that. So there's going to be consultation with every single property owner if this fiber's going to go to their home that says, "All right, if you want this, fine. If you don't want this, fine too, but if you want it, you have to sign an easement that allows us to come in here," and it all gets pretty well-defined. So this is certainly not an attempt to run roughshod over the community, but the fiber part of it is fairly easy in terms of figuring out where it goes. These zones that are on this map are pretty much defined by where the railroad tracks go, which is messy, and also where the major north-south streets are. You don't want to cross Lincoln Avenue any more often than you have to. You certainly don't want to cross the railroad tracks any more than you have to. So if you look at these zones, they kind of end up being little quadrants that are formed by the interstate on one side and maybe two railroad tracks on another. It's expensive to cross the railroad tracks, but once you get the permission to do it and you pay the fees to do it, you know, then it's, it's not impossible to get done.
Brendan?
Yeah, so I guess my last comment is that I, this is incredibly exciting. As one of those people who sort of saw the community wireless initiatives and was a Prairie Net member until they discontinued services as well for years, this is, technology-wise, very smart for the city to leverage, you know, we have a budget too for building out fiber, and if we can put the same amount of money to this project and get the community with access, not just our fire stations and the things we were planning on, then that's great. So this is very exciting. It's also interesting because it's started with you and the U of I driving it, but I think to get a grant submission in on time, like you say, we all have to pull together a little bit and talk about, do we do an intergovernmental agreement, or do we start a nonprofit group that runs, that runs the project, or some way of the three entities working together? So, yeah, I support the motion, and I think that the city staff, Bill DeJarnay and the IT folks should play a role, because they already know what we've got budgeted for fiber and where it already goes and how this can fit with that. But that I think people like Ron Eldridge, the comptroller, and the mayor could play a role in terms of the budget piece. How much do we already have set aside for building our own fiber, and how can we fund just buying into this project to get so much more?
Bill is working very economically, so my guess is he doesn't have $557,000 set aside at this point, but he has something. I don't know what that is. He has a plan for getting all of your fire stations, for eventually getting to all the schools as well, but I think the schools are, are participating in that.
Yes. Yeah, this definitely fast-tracks it all, and so changes the financial picture. And, and I think that obviously the city legal staff should be involved, so maybe some sort of working team. I'd be happy too, as well, to, to be part of some meetings to help talk through possibilities as it comes back to city council and hear updates. I know it is a quick turnaround to get a grant submission in, so, so by you coming here tonight, you're kind of asking us to jump on the chariot and speed away with you, and to me, that's, that's very exciting, and I support city staff.
There's a lot of unknowns, and I welcome extra help in making decisions, because a lot of what you see before you just kind of came out of my head, and it's had some feedback from other people, but not as much as it needs.
Okay.